I call to order the September 19, 2019 Board of Commissioners' Regular Session. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Steve Brisby?
Present.
Commissioner Derek Keaton?
Here.
Commissioner Tom Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Garrett Cuthbert?
Here.
Commissioner Michelle Hatcher?
Present.
Commissioner Jake Smith?
Present.
You have four.
After a moment of silence, Commissioner Hatcher will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to ratify and amend the 2019 scheduled meetings? 2019 Annual Meeting, Calhoun County Commission to be rescheduled from October 3rd to September 19th, 2019 is presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brisby?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Buddy?
Yes.
That a yes?
Motion carries. All right, so we will move on to that portion of the meeting.
Now you just need to have a motion to approve the updated...
Okay, need a motion to approve the Board of Canvasser appointments as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, hang on.
Prove all the agenda.
Oh, it's a roll call.
Oh, roll call.
It's a roll call.
All right. Call the order.
See, under special order business, we just need to get a roll call for the new agenda.
Okay.
Where are we at here?
Four. So mine says eight, see, but I don't know if that's right.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the September 19th Regular Session Agenda as presented, amended?
So moved. Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Now where are we at? In the minutes?
Did you approve the minutes?
Yep. Have a motion to approve the minutes, the Board of Commissioners' September 5th, 2019 Regular Session as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next item on the agenda is Citizens Time. During Citizens Time, the Board Chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the Board. Person recognized by the Chair shall approach the podium and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the Board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for Citizens Time on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. Chair shall control the length of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes and shall not allow negative personal comments. Are there any citizens wishing to address their commissioners? Anyone? Anyone? All right, we'll move on. Yeah, elected and appointed county officials. Anyone want to address the commissioners? Chair, prosecutor? All right.
I'm Melinda, the Deputy Treasurer. I just wanted to tell you guys about a thing that Mike Vanderbel and I and my staff have been working on to try to get more dogs licensed. So this year, we're going to try this to see what happens. We're doing our first Fall Palooza here at the county building, and what we're going to do is we have a vet that's volunteered his time, and we're going to do three-year rabies with three-year licenses for $50, and then we're going to do, you get a three-year rabie and one-year license for 25. We're going to see how many people we can get. We're going to do it right out here at the county building, and so we would like you guys, I have flyers, we're going to put them up in a lot of places, but if you guys could get the word out to people, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Special Order Business, we have a Calhoun County Land Bank Authority Biannual Update.
That's very, very cute.
Good evening, everyone. I am Krista Edwards, the Director of the Land Bank Authority. A little while ago, you should have received a copy of our Biannual Report in your mailboxes, so just wanted to come and give a quick update. I did provide a PowerPoint, it's not going to be projected, but it just highlights some of the main points of the Biannual Report, starting with a comparison of accomplishments between 2017 and 2018. You can see there was a lot of demo activity in those years, and we do have that $4 million grant, which we are just about done with. We've got all the demos done now, but we're still working through the funding portion of that. You can see that our Neighborhood Mown Maintenance Program, which is where community groups help maintain our properties for our stipend, that has grown from 280 lots in 2017 to 400 in 2018. And then you can also see that our side lots, they were 70, we sold 70 in 2017, and we sold fewer in 2018, and that has to do with, once we tear them down with the grant, we have to go through quite a long process to be able to sell them and get them out of the grant, so that's where that holdup is.
Excuse me.
So, and the next slide would be the property inventory. We sold 97 in 2017 and 73 in 2018. A lot of that has to do, again, with the properties we can't sell because they're tied up in the grant.
What was that last number?
The 73 in 2018. And then we also provided some information in our annual report. We've been going through our inventory to better position it, either for redevelopment or make sure that it's classified as a side lot, and we're reaching out to folks who might want to purchase that side lot to get it back on the tax roll and market it. So we did a lot of that over the winter, and we're still working on that, but those numbers are also included in the report, just to kind of show folks how many properties we have and where we think they're going to end up. We do have some pretty challenged properties that we've been working on over the past year, and we'll continue to work on those and try and build capital stacks to address them, and that would be something like the Union Steel or some of the commercial sites that have some contamination that needs to be dealt with before they can be redeveloped. We also provided a glance at our financials. You can see that most of our funding through the last couple of years have come from grants, which is pretty normal for a land bank. We also have generated revenue through property sales, you know, some agreements with the county and the treasurer, and through the 550, which is a small amount, really, it's our statutory funding mechanism where we receive 50% of the taxes on a property after we sell it, which would be great if we were selling a lot of houses, but we're selling a lot of side lots, so it's not generating a lot of revenue, as much as you would think. And you can also see in that graph just below that, that most of our funding is going towards demolition over the last couple of years. So a couple of highlights that we're pretty proud of, and we have stepped up our rehabilitation game through our Transform This Home program. That started late 2015, and it took a few years for it to get off the ground. In 2017, we sold five properties, and we expected the investment in those to be around $80,000. We sold them to four investors, so those are folks who are going to rehab them and then sell them on the market, and one owner occupied. In 2017, or I'm sorry, 2018, we sold seven properties with an expected investment of $150,000, and we actually saw it flip. We saw five owners buy, which is kind of what we're hoping for, people who are going to buy those houses and rehab them and live in the property and be part of that neighborhood, and then two investors. So we went from five to seven, and this year, we've sold 13. We only have four left in our portfolio, so that program has really taken off, and we're pretty proud of that. It's pretty flexible, so you can buy a Transform This Home house and be well skilled, you can do carpentry and, you know, your electrics and everything, or you can approach it, do part of the work yourself, and use some contractors, or you can do all contractors. So we've seen a variation of folks rehab those houses. Some of them are in pretty bad shape, so, you know, sometimes they find things that take a little longer, but overall, it's been very successful. I've included a couple of slides that just show some of the transformations. The first one is 221 Kirkwood in Springfield. We sold that house for $5,000. It was contaminated with meth, which we did provide some data so that we could get that cleaned up, and we did all of that pre-work before we sold it. We sold it to a builder who knew what he was doing. He rehabbed the house and sold it for $65,000. So one of the things that we're really excited about in this program is that we're seeing houses sell at a higher price point in some of the neighborhoods that we work, which are the more urban neighborhoods, so we're developing some new comps, which is really important to our housing market. We also have a 30 Northside Drive here. This is a historic home in the Washington Heights neighborhood. We repaired the roof on it. It took a long time to find the right buyer. We really wanted to find somebody who was going to own or occupy that house. We sold it for $22,000. They went in and they rehabbed it pretty quickly. They knew exactly what they wanted to do. They're living there today. They're going to be on our home tour tomorrow. They're going to show it off. They're very excited. So we sold that one, and we sold one across the street recently, and so whenever we can have a couple of projects in the same area, it's a good thing for those blocks because it helps stabilize it. We've also done several rehabs with Habitat for Humanity. We have five projects between 2017 and 2018. They expanded outside of the Battle Creek Market. They have one now in Marshall, and we've just, this isn't an annual report from the last couple of years, but they're doing one in Albion as well, so we're excited about that. And one thing I would add about Transform This Home is that those are being sold all over the county as well. Of course, demolition continues to be a big part of our work. We've done a lot of partnership demolitions with the City of Albion at 608 Austin Avenue, which is a privately-owned building that they asked us to demolish for them, so they paid us for our skills. Darwimpel School, we did in 2017 with the county treasurer, and then last year, we took on some of those commercial and single-family ones that the Board of Commissioners supported through the treasurer's office. Our HH 3.8 grant, which is our $4 million grant, is almost done. We completed 148 demolitions in 2017 and 2018. Today, we have 262 that are down, so that's the most of the distressed properties that were in our portfolio, the ones that were causing a lot of problems, either through meth or dumping or, you know, just nuisance activity at those sites, so, which is kind of why we have all these side lots that we need to figure out what we're going to do next. So, you know, demolition is kind of the first phase, and then there's the second phase, which is what are you going to do with those properties and how are you going to position them? But another thing that we're proud of is that there were a lot of partnerships. It wasn't just the land bank trying to figure it all out. The county was, of course, our partner on the grant, the City of Albion, the City of Battle Creek, the City of Springfield, Emmett Township, everybody kind of came and helped troubleshoot some really bad properties that we were able to either get control of or tear down, you know, through some creative solutions. So another thing that we do, which is just kind of fun, we activate vacant spaces. So I just have a couple of examples. We've been a part of the Color the Creek Street Art Festival for the last four years, and there's a photo of us actually scraping and prepping a wall for that a couple of years ago. We do gardens, and we do lot adoptions, so we have some businesses that adopt a lot from us and then beautify it, or even neighbors that just want to adopt and do a garden. So we have some of those things going on, shared that there. Last year, we really took a step in a new direction, where we got involved with historic preservation, in part because we own a lot of historic properties, and we did not want to tear them down. So we did some workshops at the 26 Fremont House that were very well attended, and we partnered with the Michigan Historic Preservation Network to pull those off. We did a fundraiser there this year, and we also continued doing the workshops, and that allowed folks who owned historic homes to come and work with a skilled tradesperson, you know, find out, okay, this is how you fix your foundation, or this is how you troubleshoot what you need to do, or your plaster, or taking out pocket doors. We also ripped off a rotting porch and rebuilt that, so that was interesting and fun. So we've got that, and we're still working on historic preservation. Another big thing that we were able to finalize in 2018 was a long-term lease with the American Collloid Plant in the City of Albion. I've been here eight years. I've been working on this site for eight years. We got him into a 30-year lease. They agreed to make a $9 million investment in that plant, and they also purchased an additional nine acres, which is a great, great story for the City of Albion. It means the company is committed to that municipality. We also tore down last year the former State Farm headquarters at 410 East Drive. We've done a ton of work on that property as well. We got a grant through the Michigan Municipal League to do some pre-development work. We've had a handful of public meetings with the residents, and the last site design that we took, which is here on the end of that slide, was well-received. It's a mix of single-family duplexes and small cottages, and people really responded well to that, so we felt we had made some good use of our time to go back and really think about how that property could be developed and fit into the neighborhood and offer some housing solutions. And we've had a lot of conversations with our board about what to do with that site, and we took it, I took it to the Neighborhood Improvement Authority this week, and I'm going to take it to MATA in the future, so we're still kind of working through how to position that property. And just another highlight that has been really transformative for the land bank is we have an EPA assessment grant that we are partners with the City of Albion and the City of Battle Creek. It's $600,000. There's a map in here that just shows some properties in red. Those are all around downtown Battle Creek, and those are all projects that we helped with the EPA grant, so that would include the Record Box, the New Holland Brewery Building, the Tiger Room Project, the new Jimmy John's that's downtown, just a lot of things that we were able to help with the development because we had this grant money. And then we've also been able to use that grant money in some long-term properties that we've held, so we've got two sites on Hamlin Avenue, the old Dugan, and then the auto collision across the street that we were able to use that money for. We're using it on Union Steel and several buildings in downtown Albion. And then we also used it in the Village of Athens. They wanted to turn an old historic house into a community space, and they needed to do the environmental, so we were able to help them out, too. So it's been a really great grant for us, and we are going to be looking at reapplying and trying to bring more money in because it's really needed here. So my last slide is just what's next. So we're going to be doing a strategic plan. We've been doing a lot of conversations with our board about how to position our properties and what's the right role for the land bank. We have a lot of conversations with our community members about housing, affordable housing or accessible price point housing, and so those are some of the things that, you know, we have land and there's this need, and so what's the right balance there? And so we'll continue to work on that over the next year.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Krista.
All right, thank you.
Good work. All right. Next is the Stepping Up Resolution, and I'll have Commissioner King read that to the record.
Thank you, Chair Brisby. The stepping up to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails resolution. Whereas counties routinely provide treatment services to the estimated 2 million people with serious mental illnesses booked into jail each year, whereas prevalence rates of serious mental illness in jails are three to six times higher than for the general public, whereas almost three-quarters of adults with serious mental illnesses in jails have co-occurring substance and disorders, whereas adults with mental illnesses tend to stay longer in jail and upon release are at a higher risk of recidivism than people without these disorders. Whereas county jails spend two to three times more on adults with mental illnesses that require interventions compared to those without these treatment needs. Whereas without the appropriate treatment and services, people with mental illnesses continue to cycle through the criminal justice system, often resulting in tragic outcomes for these individuals and their families. Whereas Calhoun County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. Whereas Calhoun County has developed a crisis intervention team, which helps to divert individuals experiencing mental health and/or substance abuse, substance use concerns from being incarcerated. Since the inception of the program in 2017, there have been over 550 CIT contacts. Of those contacts, 541 have been linked to appropriate treatment and community resources. And whereas through stepping up, the National Association of Counties, the Council of State Governments, Justice Center, and the American Psychiatric Association Foundation are encouraging public, private, and nonprofit partners to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jail. Now therefore, let it be resolved that we, Calhoun County Board of Commissioners, do hereby sign onto the call to action to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in our county jail, commit to sharing lessons learned with other counties in my state and across the country to support a national initiative and encourage all county officials, employees, and residents to participate in stepping up. We resolve to utilize the comprehensive resources available through stepping up to convene a draw on a diverse team of leaders and decision-makers from multiple agencies committed to safety, reducing the number of people with mental illnesses in jails, collect and review prevalence numbers, and assess individuals' needs to better identify adults entering jails with mental illnesses and their recidivism risk, and use the baseline information to guide decision-making at the system, program, and case levels. Examine treatment and service capacity to determine which programs and services are available in the county for people with mental illnesses and co-occurring substance abuse disorders, and identify state and local policy and funding barriers to minimize contact with the justice system and providing treatment and supports in the community. Develop a plan with measurable outcomes that draws on the jail assessment and prevalence data and the explanation of available, and examination of available treatment and service capacity while considering identified barriers. Implement research-based approaches that advance the plan and create a process to track progress using data and information systems and to report on successes. And I went blind about 2,000 words ago. Signed, Steve Brisby, Chair of the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners.
Awesome job reading that. Can I have a motion to approve the stepping up resolution as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion?
I think we should have Mrs. Taff from Summit Point come up and say anything worth about it.
We can.
So you heard in the stepping up initiative, it is our goal to build on some of our crisis intervention team initiative that we already have established in Calhoun County, and our hope is that we continue to appropriately divert people with mental health disorders from our county jails. And Leonard from Wayne State University is here with me today, who is part of the initiative, and he'll talk a little bit about what his team is able to do to help support that here in our county, and the work that he's done with some other counties and been very successful in doing.
Can I have some comments? Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm Leonard Swanson. I'm from Wayne State University Center for Behavioral Health and Justice. We're a research center based mainly in Detroit, but really, we do work with counties across the state, and so I definitely urge you to pass the stepping up resolution. You would be joining 19 other counties across the state of Michigan in doing so, as well as joining a national movement to decrease the number of people with mental illness in jails. This resolution comes at no cost to the county. In fact, it would open the door for our technical assistance, which would be funded by the state. So really, this is a win-win situation for everybody. So the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, in partnership with the Mental Health Diversion Council, agreed to fund our research team to offer technical assistance to any county signing a stepping up resolution, and this would be the formal mechanism for us to do that. So I'll talk a little bit about the problem, why it's so complicated and technical assistance would be useful, how we can help Calhoun County, particularly how do we help you set up to apply for state foundation and federal funding? So it's a heck of a problem. So when someone comes into jail with a serious mental illness, they're at risk for decompensation, causing a problem not only for the system themselves, but also the correction officer's staff. When someone expresses suicidality, which is unfortunately common in jails across our state, they're also at risk for homicidal tendencies. If someone loses the value of their own life, they're not in a place to place value on someone else's life, too. So this is not only a civil rights issue in our jails, but it's also an officer's safety issue for our good staff of the Calhoun County Sheriff's Department. Making the matter more complicated, there's not a lot of clinical support typically in jails. I mean, you're well aware that the county's on the books for supplying medical and mental health needs in your jails. And so what makes the problem more complicated is Medicaid gets suspended as soon as someone enters the jail. So if your Medicaid is suspended, they can't access the care that they have in the community, and they wouldn't be able to access the good care that Summit Point has been able to offer. So that ends up in discontinuity of care and discontinuity of medications. So now we have someone entering the jail, which is not a great setting. I don't need to be a clinician to tell you that, and then they're off their meds. It's not a great setting for anybody. So what a lot of counties have done to try to solve this is apply for grant funding as a main mechanism to bring clinical help into the jails. But the problem with applying for grant funding is you need baseline data to be able to show why such funding would be necessary. And to collect this baseline data is no simple task. If we're talking about someone that's entering the criminal justice system with a history of mental illness, you might have the crisis described in the law enforcement data, you might have medical data stored in EMS or emergency department data, you might have their jail booking records stored in the sheriff's department, you have the Summit Point records stored on the CMH side, and then your contracted jail medical department has its own data. And there's not a lot of time on county budgets to hire someone to bring all this together and analyze it. Well, that's where our team comes in. So we've done this in a number of counties, of pulling the data together and pulling stakeholders together, who may not be familiar with each other, though Calhoun is pretty far along in this respect, which makes us a prime county to work with, you know. So we've done some of this work in a number of different counties, and so on the handout I gave you, there's a brief explanation and some sort of glowing comments of what other departments have had. And on the kind of front side of that document is the technical assistance we would walk through with you with key stakeholders, including the sheriff's department, CMH, police departments, jail medical, and what have you. So in other counties, in Jackson County, for example, they were able to pass a millage to support their mental health clinician, so we helped them with some best practice models of how that position should look, and we collected some baseline data to show a serious need for substance abuse disorders services as well. They were able to use that data to justify a second clinician in the jail, and then we helped them get another source of money to boost their opioid treatment services in the jail. So with Meskeaton County, they had a great system up and running with good collaboration, but we were the piece that helped them collect baseline data, and now they applied for two new sources of grants to boost their opioid treatment services in their jail. Washtenaw County was already pretty far when we first joined in, in terms of combining data together, but they had no context for how they were doing compared to the rest of the state. And so the data we're able to provide to them is also how they're able to measure their jail-based services. In Wayne County, we were helping them re-envision their juvenile justice piece and installing a new risk assessment tool for anyone that encounters their juvenile justice system. In Genesee County, our baseline data showed an intense need for substance abuse disorder services, as well as a long-length estate for people staying in the jail on pre-trial status. In Charlevoix, our data collection was the impetus for a new committee across criminal justice and behavioral health institutions who continues to meet at this day. So the possibilities for Calhoun are wide. I'm excited to dig in if the resolution were to pass. Again, the resolution itself does not cost anything to the county. It would open state funds for our technical assistance, and it will allow you to be in a good place to apply for grants, to bring outside money to help this problem. So I'll pause here for questions and comments.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. Just a quick question. On the second page, would be on the back page of your document, it's indicated here that nearly 90% of stakeholders agree that technical assistance from CBHCA has helped their community address up to the six stepping up questions. About the other 10%, that obviously either didn't see it as being a, was that, were those areas addressed, and what barriers were within that 10% that were so happy, if you will?
Yeah, so at the time we did the survey, we weren't completely done with our stepping up work, so Washtenaw County, we were kind of in the middle of it, and we still haven't wrapped up with them, so we haven't quite been able to answer question six with them, is how do they track progress on an ongoing basis and conducting a comprehensive process analysis? So we hadn't got to that point yet. It was just more of a matter of time. The state was asking for some data on how we were doing, and we just weren't at the time.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, and I'm sorry, you maybe had touched on this, but I was just wondering, is substance abuse considered mental? Like if you are on medication already, mental health issue, but if you are suffering from a substance abuse and enter into the jail, is that considered, is that treatment the same?
Yeah, it's a similar kind of treatment. It gets into some tricky territory. We'd like to say behavioral health issues, because people are making the split between substance abuse services and mental health services, just because they have, they split the money at a state and regional level, it gets a little complicated, but for our purposes, we can help you collect data on substance abuse needs in your county.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We have a motion and support to approve the proclamation as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Megan Leonard, come on up, and we invite the sheriff to join him in this presentation. Huge impact on the jail operations, so if they'd like. And I'd just take a second, too, to add that Commissioner King has been instrumental in pushing this in the last few weeks. And I think he understands the problem and appreciate his work in that area.
Jeannie's way too short.
And now we're going to move on to the Board of Canvasers, County Board of Canvasers election. The four-year terms of two members of the Calhoun County Board of... County canvassers will expire on November 1st, 2019. Those two members are Susan Buckley, representing the Democratic Party, and Sally Massa, representing the Republican Party. There are two other members who have two more years to serve. MCL 168.24C provides that an expired term are to be filled as follows. The county committee of each party is required to provide the county clerk with the names of three nominees for the party's expiring seat on the board. The Democratic Party submitted Susan Buckley, Tabitha Young-Minges, and Steve Weddle. The Republican Party submitted Judy Mason, Sally Mesa, and Erica Tucker. The County Board of Commissioners is required to fill the two vacancies on the board by electing a Democrat member and a Republican member from the names submitted. Michigan election law specifies that a ballot must be used by the County Board of Commissioners in filling the seats. You will vote for one nominee in each party. Michigan election law also gives commissioners the authority to request that nominee provide a letter indicating their interest in serving on the board, the intent to discharge the duties to the best of their ability, their prior election experience, and if they have been convicted of a felony or election crime. Because of the Open Meetings Act prohibits secret ballot process, at a public meeting the votes must be cast, must be available to the public. The ballot you receive tonight has a number correlating to the district you represent. Unlike a real election, do not tear this numbered stub off your ballot. If a citizen inquires about your vote, the board secretary will have a record of it. Board Chair Steve Frisbee will appoint two tellers, and that will be Commissioner Smith and Vetti, to help tally the votes of the seven commissioners for both parties. So at this time, please vote for one Republican and one Democrat nominee. And if you guys want to tally those and go with Shayna. Shayna, just go right over to Shayna.
Go over to her desk. We can go over to her desk. Oh, okay. All right.
They have to remain public, so we can't.
Gotcha.
May I have a winner?
Hopefully two.
Winners?
Susan Buckley, as a Democratic to the Board of canvassers, and Erica Tucker, as a Republican to the Board of canvassers. The county clerk election staff will notify all candidates, as well as the party chairman with the results of your election tonight. Thank you.
Great. That action is completed. Thank you, everybody. And we will move on, then, to consent agenda. Several items on the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Certified?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go back and do that. Anyone opposed to the consent agenda as presented? Okay, that motion carries. We'll need to go back and approve the vote as presented, the results as presented. I have a motion to approve the Democratic appointee of Susan Buckley and the Republican appointee of Erica Tucker to the Calhoun County Board of canvassers as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner B...
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner P...
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Standing up?
Motion carries. All right. So we've done the consent agenda. Now we're on to special committee workshop board reports. Commissioner Tompkins.
Thank you, Chair. I've got several this evening. First and foremost, the senior millage met on September 6th. We actually... This was kind of a double-up, extra meeting because we didn't meet in August because we had a lack of a quorum at that point in time. So I'll just touch on, highlight a couple of items. We approved the recommendation of Robert Ling, Marshall Township, as our new SMAT committee member, replacing Rod Otten. Certainly, that was approved this evening by the consent agenda. So we certainly welcome Robert officially to our SMAT committee. We also approved the proposed 2020 fiscal year senior millage budget, which obviously we know will be required for our approval. We're very pleased with what we seen at the meeting. And we also approved RFP recommendations to the Board of Commissioners from the RFP Review Subcommittee, which I had part taped in, as well as a few others, which included a variety of programs. I think there were 15 vendors, 11 different programs, ranging from hearing, vision, dental, money management, legal services, home heating, et cetera. I will say that I've gained certainly an appreciation, certainly, for those that have served on that RFP Subcommittee before. It's a lot of time, energy, and effort that goes into actually selecting those folks and going through the interviews. So it's quite a process. The Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Substance Abuse Oversight Policy Board also met September 9th. We held a public budget hearing on Public Act $2, which outlined the 2020 fiscal year budget projections and an overall budget summary. We also did, we approved the resolution for the 2020 fiscal year PA 2 budget as well there. The Homer Lake Board met September 10th. Blake Mallory from PLM Land Management was on hand to discuss the three treatments that were performed in the lake and the specific areas covered and what was specifically treated. I will say this is the second year in which the lake has been treated to three different times. Probably at the best point we've been in in a long, long time for that lake in terms of the clearing out of that lake, in terms of dealing with the lily pads and the things that we had. Specifically, too, we also were able to permit through the state of Michigan to have our boardwalk in that area cleaned out. And we actually seen kids fishing off that boardwalk for the first time in forever in terms of that. So that's very positive. Next year, we'll be looking at widening the channel as far as our permitting process as well, as far as the residential areas. So taking a lot of opportunity to really, to make the lake look better. We also approved our assessment role for 2019, and we doubled up on our loan payment of $2,000, which was previously $1,000. That's the second year we've done that as well. So we're in really good financial shape, and certainly attribute that to the good, great people we have on the board as well. So that's positive. And then finally, the Trail Alliance met September 11th. We had an update from the Albion Trailhead, which was provided, and expected a purchase agreement will be in hand by October 1st. All the landowners are all in on this. And then also, my understanding is the land bank will be facilitating the removal of the structures on that property. And then finally, Pete Turlo, Executive Director of Southwest Michigan Land Conservancy, was on hand to give a overview of what the organization does. Mr. Turlo indicated that over 16,000 acres are protected in Southwest Michigan, with 2,000 acres in Calhoun County, which includes 14 properties. So it was an interesting conversation with Mr. Turlo and gained a lot of knowledge. So those are my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vetti.
Thank you, Chair Frisbee. We had, in September, the Calhoun County Visitor Convention Bureau had their reorganizational meeting and an election of officers. And I was elected as chair again. My vice chair is Paul Conkey, who's the owner of Griffin Downtown Battle Creek. Kelly Scott will serve as our treasurer. And our secretary is Lowell Weaver from the Metalist Golf Course. And then we said goodbye to some longtime board members and welcomed on Jim Wise, who's the Vice President of Marketing for Firekeepers. Dawn Worthington, she's the owner of Worthington Photography and Video, and also of Dreamfield Acres. It's a new wedding and celebration venue in Marshall. Ben Randalls is the Director of Calhoun Arena, so he's new to come on. And then we also brought back Diane Thompson, CEO of the Zoo, who has served many times. So that was a nice meeting. And then we also met last Friday? Yeah, last Friday. And had our first of probably at least three segments of a strategic plan. So at least two more to come. So thank you very much.
Commissioner King.
Thank you. We heard from Krista from the land bank today. A few things that happened at that meeting is, most of you should have... I think everyone got the invite for tomorrow's transfer this home tour. I will be attending that. Hopefully, some others will be able to do the same, see how that program works. Also, at our meeting, we had a long discussion about the old State Farm property. If you haven't been through there, it is a field, or it's moat, I think. So it's not really a field, but it's not a junk building anymore. And we talked about the development of that property in depth and the RFP process related to that, and also got an update, which this is kind of exciting, for the climbing and rock wall downtown. The Bandeens are spearheading. That apparently has moved through like the mega committee, MIDC, which normally means if it makes it through, it's a done deal. So I think their financial stack is in place to finally get that up and going. We also, I think since, I don't know if I reported on this last time or not, but all the LRSP, Local Revenue Sharing Board, checks are out to all the folks that got the grants. It's quite a great impact that that grant process makes. And since I used the word impact, I use it again. We have another meeting next month to hear, hopefully, the impact study that we're supposed to do after 10 years. So we're at that 10-year mark. The Upjohn Institute is working on the impact study in conjunction with the tribe and the casino. So we hope next month we'll have that available for us, so we can see what the economic impact is, all the good, all the bad, whatever that may be.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes, I want to report. We had a solid waste meeting yesterday and talked about such a lot of things, but the two biggest things is we've brought in over 174,000 pounds of electronics this year and over 8,000 tires just this year. And only 5,000 of those tires come from Big Patrick Springfield. But so the numbers are quite a bit up.
Good. I just have one thing. SMPC, which I'm part of, is going through a process right now. We have been excluded by the regional, national group from some of the economic development opportunities, dollars, as a result of how we can... It's not because we conduct business badly. It's the relationship. And they want us to have employees and things like that, and we've resisted that. It's more complicated than that. We can talk about it as it comes up, but we dug into that issue, and we're trying to redefine the relationship between the WEP John Institute and the counties involved to try to make us eligible for these grant dollars. So we think that's important as we move forward with economic development dollar opportunities. So more on that as it comes along. And the last thing I would add is, we often give reports, and we all have assignments. And I don't think the public necessarily understands it. I'm not looking for sympathy. I just want you to know it as the public. We each have multitudes of assignments in committees, and they're very important. And I appreciate each and one, every one of you, for making those a priority in attending and participating and leading the way. So thank you.
It's a lot of time.
You bet. All right. We have no unfinished or old business. We'll go to new business, the county administrators report. I'll turn it over to Administrator Control to report. Administrator Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The theme of the board and committee meetings over this past month seemed to be strategic planning. So I'll add to a couple of those reports. I'm on the Marshall Community Credit Union Board, and we are also getting ready to update our strategic plan within the next month. So we had a meeting earlier this week. And then also, our Summit Point Board met on September 10th, with Commissioner Vetti as the Chair of that board also. And we continue to hear updates on strategic planning pretty much every month. So we have a process where we don't just let the plan sit on the shelf, but our CEO and management team report out on progress towards that at every meeting. We also adopted the fiscal year 2020 budget that starts October 1st. The Board of Health met on September 16th, approved its meeting schedule for next year. Commissioner Frisbee's on that board. And then, since then, this week, you should have seen a lot of information on social media and on email regarding the ongoing investigation of the eastern equine encephalitis from mosquitoes. And I just heard tonight that more information will be coming out tomorrow. It's getting worse. They're discovering more cases in our county. And so please read the cautionary advice. It's pretty scary, I think, that we're continuing to see people and animals infected and have very serious illness and/or die within our county and our regions. So watch for that. The Marshall Area Economic Development Alliance, or MADA, our board met on September 17. We had Doug Farrell from the county give an update on the Parks and Rec Commission's plans for a potential new countywide millage. And we also engaged our audit firm for the 2019 financial audit. MADA has a June 30 fiscal year. And then finally, the Michigan Municipal Services Authority, MMSA, also met on September 12. And then this week, we interviewed two candidates for interim CEO. So as the Chair of that authority, I'm very excited to potentially select a new CEO, at least on an interim basis. Let's see. I think my final update is that, as you know, we're in the process of issuing bonds to refinance our 2010 outstanding bonds. And we got our... I reported at the last meeting that we got a double-A bond rating affirmed by Standard and Poor's. We priced the bonds on September 11. It was actually very favorable pricing, even though it was before the feds lowered the interest rates yesterday. But it was considerably better than the savings that we estimated when you approved that resolution. And we're expecting about 300,000 of interest savings, simply due to lower interest rates over the remainder of the life of the bonds. And again, we're not extending the debt service schedule at all. We're still going to pay off the debt within the same time. We're going to save 300,000 over about the next 11 years. So that concludes my report. And then under new business tonight, we have nine items. Seven of those require action, and two of them are for information only. So we'll start with inviting our Water Resources Commissioner up. We typically have his annual report at the county's annual meeting, which we revise to be today. And you have a copy of the annual report in the pack, and it starts on page 103, if you want to follow along. Hi, Fred.
Good evening. I'm Fred Eaton, Water Resource Commissioner. Mine's going to be very short. Business has been, excuse me, has it been the last few years, basically quiet. Working on projects as they come, which just kind of moves along a little bit at a time. You get one finished, you might get two in. Otherwise, been successful in getting most of the people pleased with what we're doing. We have a few issues that we got through this spring. Lake levels were a real problem maintaining them. Started out wet, lowered them, or had them lowered for winter, didn't get them back quite as quick as we normally would due to lack... quick as we normally would due to lack of rain. So we got that resolved. They seem to be up where they need to be as now. Penfield Number Two was a petition. It was a petition. We let it out for bids, just way off the wall price-wise. I rejected everything. Shouldn't have been half of it. The engineer was incredible on his price. The whole thing should have been half. We may relit that in a summary on just a limited basis, just to fix what needs to be fixed. I thought I knew who was going to take advantage and who wasn't, but I found out, every once in a while, you find out people that, companies that will take advantage. But anyway, well, Gang of Lakes, Road Department's going to put in in the future four big culverts. On that aspect, on that system as well, we took out a lot of, a couple miles of trees. And this is by hand. They have a gas-powered winch, and they, up on the bank, and they put ropes around, and they pull them up by hand. We did a little over two miles, two and a half miles, I think it was about ten thousand dollars. And that was amazing. I had one complaint on Prairie Lake this year, and that was questionable. Well, that is a blessing. Get the system opened up. I wanted the system opened up before the Road Department put the tubes in. And we're going to do some more work on there. Cost-effective is just incredible. It would have cost that much just to open up the area to work in, because the banks are both high and never been leveled. So we're improving on that. Eleven-mile road petition is canceled now. It's gone on for over five years, and it's, they declined to move forward on it. So that's over. So basically, it's been, it hasn't been that bad a year this year for us, and I'm very pleased with the outcome of everything. We got one problem. Since I've been working in early eighties for the Road Department Drain Commission, the Roman's drain come up in Urbandale. And this is one that I so much appreciate getting fixed. All these years, we've never been able to fix it correctly. We've got it fixed this year. The flooding's relieved. Very thankful. We got one petition possibly coming up in Leroy Township. That's another case of an engineer that should have completely did his job, and he didn't. So there's another hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's going to have to be saved, probably. And it could have been fixed for maybe ten thousand, when they did the job, to complete it. So this is where you keep an eye on who's working for you, and know what they're doing. And I have no sympathy for anyone. They will, they're going to do it, or do it correctly, or not do it. I'm hoping. So that's basically it. If there's any questions on my budget, I'll do the best I can to answer it.
Any questions for Fred? Commissioner Tom.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me, just more of a comment. Fred, you're exactly right. Prairie Lake has been wonderful. Obviously, when, a couple of years ago, that was a major, major problem in terms of the continuous flooding and the issues they had. Great job to you and the group for getting that taken care of, and just overall, good job on what you've been doing. It's been a good year, been very quiet in terms of not having any phone calls myself. So great job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner King.
Thank you, Chair Frisbee. So Fred, you talked about the Penfield Drain, which a couple of us have got complaints about, that that work hasn't happened, when there was a hearing for that, right, in a necessity hearing?
Yes.
What do you have to go by that, from both the engineer and the contractor that was doing the work, that makes you think that their work was out of line, other than just your opinion?
It's just the basic cost. What needed to be done just ran away. I mean, they just kept adding to it, adding to it, adding to it. The two issues that they spent a lot of time on, the Road Department issues, that had nothing to do with us. That was a Road Department's problem, not ours, just to maintain the county ditch, the roadside ditch. That should not have even been involved. That's where it got away from me. I trusted the individual that did the engineering. What I propose is a very simple version of taking care of the problem that needed to be fixed. The problem hasn't been a problem since the first year the Road Department worked out there, as far as flooding and support. There has been no flooding that I know of. No one has called me about any flooding. I check it. When we get heavy rains, there's been no issues. If we move forward with it, it'll be a simple project, and it won't cost half what the contractors wanted to do, to do the job that needs to be done, that it was addressed to do in the first place. Those other parts of it were not addressed to do. They were add-ons. Well, we want this done while you're here, and we want this done while you're, I have no idea why. So that's my answer to that. If it's not clear enough or thorough enough, I just need to know.
No, it's fine. I don't, who decided what work got done? The Water Resources Commissioner or the Drain Board that?
We set it up, or the engineering, I told the engineer exactly what I wanted. I engineered it myself, gave him the spec that I wanted. And he just, I just can't believe it went from simple to extravagant. He just went with it. I didn't know what was going on with it. We got a sixty, about a sixty thousand dollar bill for engineering. And I was thinking the project ought to cost that much to take care of the problem we've got, total. So it went from this, and I, like I say, I had no idea it was going to this, to a couple of road issues along Verona Road, no, that'd be Morgan Road, I'm sorry, along Morgan Road. Well, we got a problem here, we need to address this and this. And that was a Road Department issue. That was not a Drain Commission issue. So that should have been handled independently through them, not us. Because then, now, that is, that's, there's quite a bit of cost involved in that. And I just kept getting answers that I couldn't believe from the engineer. Well, this is why it costs so much. And I've done, I've done this work for almost forty years now. You can't tell me that when a job should have cost sixty thousand dollars, you've got a sixty thousand dollar engineering bill.
Wow.
Whose summer home are we paying for?
Absolutely.
That's what it upsets me.
Wow.
So this, well, if this project's done, it will be done for a lot less than what those bids come in for.
Are there any other questions? Can I have a motion to accept the 2019 Drain and Lake Level Projects Assessment Summary? An annual report is presented, and direct the Water Resources Commissioner to proceed as provided by law.
So moved. Support.
Have a motion, support. Is there any more discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
All right. Item 12B2 also comes from Water Resources Commissioner, and this is a lake, approval of lake level resolutions for six lakes within the county. And Fred?
I'll leave that to Stacy.
All right, Stacy.
Good evening, Stacy Hisong. I was here a year ago to talk about these lake levels. We took care of one last year in Duck Lake, and these are the remaining established lake levels in Calhoun County. All but one, Graham Lake, had deficiencies in the previous order in terms of the Special Assessment District. And we've taken care of those, all of them, including Graham Lake, through five Circuit Court proceedings, and then hearings for all six lakes in July. So pursuant to the Inland Lake Level Act, we've held those hearings. I thought they went very well. We've prepared a computation of costs and an assessment rule for this Board to approve. And so we have resolutions for each of those lakes that are exactly similar in language with regard to approving the computation of costs, the cost of those projects, as well as the special assessment rule.
Can I have a motion to approve the lake level resolutions as presented for Gogwak Lake, Graham Lake, Lee Lake, Lion Lake, Nadawah Lake, and St. Mary's Lake, and authorize the Board Chair to sign all necessary documents?
So moved.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12B3, after all of the resolutions and assessments, starts on page two hundred. And this is the request that you approve, an application for economic development grant for improvements to Twenty-Nine Mile that becomes Clark Street. So this is a partnership with the City of Albion, and it's in response to the expansion of Knopf Insulation Company in Albion. So our managing director is here, from the Road Department, John Midgley, who can answer any questions. But as the information outlines, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. The good news is that the grant will pay for three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we've been talking about these economic development grants as a really great opportunity, if we can find projects that qualify. So it's nice to see some expansion. It has to actually create jobs, which this one will. And the county's portion is really about ten percent of the total, sixty-five thousand dollars, and that will be in the Road Department's budget, within the current budget. And the city of Albion will pay the difference between the grant and the six hundred and fifty thousand. So their portion is two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution in support of the submission of the MDOT Transportation Economic Development Ted Fund Category A Grant Application in partnership with the City of Albion and Knopf Insulation?
So moved.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Item 12B4 starts on page two oh one. This is Senior Millage Amendment for the Community Care Options Program. And this will essentially ramp up the funding for this program from what used to be three hundred thousand dollars in annual funding to four hundred thousand dollars by the time we get to next year. And Helen Guzzo is here, our senior services manager. And as Commissioner Tompkins mentioned, the Senior Millage Allocation Committee met earlier and, I believe, discussed this.
Yes.
But it has to do with alleviating the waitlist of, it looks like, thirty-one seniors. And it is, the agreement is with senior health partners, doing business as pace.
Can I have a motion to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2018-20 contract between the Calhoun County and Comprehensive Senior Care Corporation as presented?
So moved. Support.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Item 12B5 is a budget amendment in accordance with our fiscal policies that require amendments over twenty thousand dollars per business unit to come to the Board. So as you know, the Health Department's budget was passed for next year, because their fiscal year ends at the end of this month, September. So similar to the county's annual end-of-year budget amendment, this is the Health Department's final budget adjustments. And it does not impact the bottom line, meaning we're not anticipating a request for additional general fund appropriations or additional use in the health fund balance.
Can I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 final budget adjustments for the Calhoun County Public Health Department as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion, and support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Item 12B6 starts on page two oh nine. This is approval of the PA Two Alcohol Tax Budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty, starts on October first of this year, in accordance with the state's fiscal year. So these are the local tax dollars collected from alcohol sales within Calhoun County. And this has gone through quite a bit of due diligence. And Commissioners Vetti and Tompkins are on the Oversight Board through SWIMBA that has already reviewed and approved this. And I believe SWIMBA itself has already approved this budget for our referral. And the total amount of the recommended expenditures for next year is four hundred eighteen thousand, three seventy-nine. It is lower than last year's budget of four hundred and seventy thousand. So the state is predicting about a one and a half increase in our alcohol tax revenues. Just a reminder that out of all of the revenues we collect, fifty percent of that stays with the County General Fund. Fifty percent must go for treatment and prevention services for substance use disorders. So in our case, all of it goes towards treatment services, and SWIMBA is able to allocate state block grant dollars for the prevention services that happen within Calhoun County. And we noted in here, and I want to make this statement so that you all hear it, because our revenues are about half of what we used to get when there was a different law in place allocating dollars differently, we've been spending down our fund balance essentially. And going forward, we're, you know, assuming taxes stay pretty steady in this area, we needed to reduce most of the program funding by twenty percent next year. And next year, it's going to even drop off more drastically. So we've, you know, given that information to all of the providers. And when I say providers, so out of the four hundred thousand dollar budget, roughly three hundred thousand goes to our county's treatment courts. So about seventy-five percent of that stays, you know, within our treatment court programs. The remainder goes to the Haven in Battle Creek and to Summit Point. Summit Point provides services in the jail and in our juvenile home using that funding. So I think this is the best we can do with what we have to work with. And it's been supported already by the various Oversight Boards, and we ask, and it's required by law, that the Board approve this budget.
Commissioner Smith? Do you want to announce?
No.
Were you going to abstain?
Yeah.
Okay, so just announce that.
Oh, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
He has a conflict of interest as his employer, so legit reason not to vote. Can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County PA Two Alcohol Tax Budget for Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Services for fiscal year nineteen twenty in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine, in expenses as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Six yes?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 12B7 is on page two fifteen of the PDF, and this is approval of a license to use the Sperry Avenue right of way, which is Road Department-owned property in Bedford Township. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Corporation Counsel, Jim Dyer, to present this item.
Thank you, Kelly. The, probably the best, the best evidence regarding this is the map that I included of the area in question. This is quite a unique situation. As you will see from the map, Sperry Avenue is a through street, or actually is a dead-end street in a subdivision platte a considerable number of years ago. And it actually dead-ends into a swale area, that is, where there's a considerable drop in the elevation of the street. It's wooded. There has been historically no development. And you can see the other streets in the area also have not developed beyond the area of that swale. The improved portion of Sperry is shown on the map in white, surrounded by the red of property owned by the church in question that has asked for the county to abandon this roadway. We are in the process of seeking an amendment to the subdivision platte, which I believe generally should come before you abandon the road by statute. Once that's done, you are in a position to abandon the road, and the property can then be, to the centerline,
Thank you, Kelly. The, probably the best, the best evidence regarding this is the map that I included of the area in question. This is quite a unique situation. As you will see from the map, Sperry Avenue is a through street, or actually is a dead-end street in a subdivision platte at a considerable number of years ago. And it actually dead-ends into a swale area, that is, where there's a considerable drop in the elevation of the street. It's wooded. There has been historically no development. And you can see the other streets in the area also have not developed beyond the area of that swale. The improved portion of Sperry is shown on the map in white, surrounded by the red of property owned by the church in question that has asked for the county to abandon this roadway. We are in the process of seeking an amendment to the subdivision platte, which I believe generally should come before you abandon the road by statute. Once that's done, you are in a position to abandon the road, and the property can then be, to the centerline, would then be owned by the church in question, rather than the county. Right now, we're obligated to maintain a road that basically dead-ends into the existing parking lot of the church. So, the church would like to construct some additional lighting, overhead lighting to illuminate their parking lot. And the license would permit them to do that outside of the, what is, would actually be the traveled portion of the roadway, effectively a portion of their existing parking lot. So, that's the purpose of the license. So they can do that in the intermediate time between the time when the subdivision platte amendment change is approved, and you abandon the road, and they own that property. Because right now, we own the property as the road, functioning as the road commission. So, we're asking you to approve the license to permit them to make, do that construction, and allow them to use it in that fashion, in a temporary manner until they own it.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the license to use property and right-of-way as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hatcher?
Yes. Jim, could you explain, if we abandon the road, the property automatically reverts to the church?
Well, because it's a subdivision platte, it's not automatic, because that's what the amendment of the platte is all about. The Circuit Court would make a determination of where that, where that property, who owns that property. But in this instance, since all of the property, you know, literally above it, beyond it, on both sides, all four sides is owned by the church, it would make no sense, other than to collapse the lot line to the centerline of the road, and the church would own all of that property. The only issue that might come up, and we've had nobody that has raised this issue in litigation to amend the platte, would be whether or not there's any ingress or egress problems that would be created by abandoning Sperry. And if you look at the, at the map that I provided, to the south, there is a property that would appear to be landlocked, but it is actually owned by a person that has property fronting on one of the other, the other streets, other than Sperry. So he has contiguous property that permits him to access the property already. So I don't believe that that's been an issue, and that landowner has not objected to the subdivision platte amendment.
Any other questions? We have a motion support. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
No.
Six yes, one no.
Motion carries.
Okay. The next two items are informational only, and there are financial statements through August for the county, and then for the road department. So, item 12B8 is on page 227. If you look at the cover memo that our finance staff prepared, we're noting that on the expenditure side, you know, we're two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year, and expenditures are pretty much right on in total, although, you know, we're still watching fringe benefits, actual claims. On the revenue side, really, the only significant variance is in property taxes. So, property tax bills go out in July, due in September. So I think within the next month, we'll hope to see that timing variance hopefully go away. So we get taxes from the local units of government as they collect them and remit them. So there's always a little bit of a timing lag, and just looks like they're coming in a little slower than, than last year. So that would conclude my report on the county's financials through August, and I'm happy to be answer. Any questions?
Great. Can I have a motion to accept the Calhoun County August 2019 Financial Statements for Information Only?
So moved.
Support.
Motion supporter. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Last item is 12B9, and after this, that will conclude my report for new business. Page 287, and then 288 starts the cover memo for the road department, financial statements through August. Main thing that changed from last year to this year is that you can see a considerable amount, a considerable increase in the preservation structural improvement line, which are basically the construction projects, and also the road maintenance line item, where we've completed the contracted patching for the year. We have not completed pothole patching in its entirety, so our crews are still out pothole patching. But the contract work has been completed at a total cost of 3.4 million. And it's also noted, we did 1.3 million in chip seal on primary roads, and skip paving, another 1.4 million. So quite a bit of work on primary roads this year. And also, we are, we're able to do some more structural improvements based on continuing spend down of the bond proceeds issued a couple of years ago.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the Calhoun County Road Department August 2019 Financial Statements for Information Only?
Yes.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Miller?
I understand we've done a lot of blade patching, like hundreds and hundreds of tons of blade patching this summer. Is that considered skip paving, or underpatching, or?
I'll ask John if you know the answer. Blade, blade patching, right?
Yes.
Which, do you know which category?
We did, sorry. Some of the blade patching was done at like the end of the day when the contractor crews were finishing up. We had some material left. We were taking it out, the whole way. So we had a pretty good, you know, we had five and a ton of material left. Then our crew would go out and spread that, and patch with that. The contractor came across a spot that was, you know, fairly long, and it would take forever to try to fill all those spots. He notified our auditors around there, and we blade patched those. So that is, some of that is, we did, we applied.
All right. I know 18 mile road north of, right around I Drive there. Recently, they've done a lot of blade patching through there. So, I was just kinda curious if that's considered patching, or if that was?
No, we haven't. Unless we've got a specific project for skip paving, which is, that's considered part of the regular maintenance, or part of the...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Citizens' time. Our next item is citizens' time. Same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your time to three minutes, and no negative personal comments. Anyone like to address their commissioners? Anyone? Jerry?
I'm Jerry.
Say your name again.
My name's Jerry Keller.
Thanks, Jerry.
We're gonna have to have a... No, we are, we're gonna have to have an entrance, right, for this building. I would suggest we put a couple spots in the shop, in the newspaper, or something, a couple times a month, a couple months. You know, and explain to the citizens. I come to these things a lot. It was a lot different tonight for me. None of the doors were unlocked but